You go ahead and turn it on for sure.
That's the first thing. This is your, this is your, this is your, which is no way to listen to.
I get a lot of people coming in like that. But I have, I think we really need to work on. We need to talk about what to do, but I think we need to put you in that position.
Your phone out?
I heard Charlie right there. I don't know.
I like, I like, I have no problem. I like public safety. Those people know me and I know them.
I, I knew they were going to have that complaint, I like. You'll get her straight up. Thank you.
And there's Steve too. Alright, let's go ahead and go with it.
Okay.
You ready? Meeting will come to order. Um, for public information, a copy of the Nebraska Opens Meeting Act is posted in the back of this meeting room on the east wall. Um, next item is roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer? Raisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
And, uh, we don't expect Ken, is what I understand. Um, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When we get done with your talking.
So, um, we need to, um, have an approval of the agenda, and I believe tonight it's for discussion of budget, per, budget items only, so. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
We'll second that.
Blue?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Alright, um, agenda's approved. So we'll go, uh, right into the budget items. Um, uh, you want to give us a little update of any information, uh, Lisa, that you found out maybe today before we go to?
And I did want to point out, did you all notice the mural, the mural out front?
The what?
Mural.
On the door?
The mural on the door, our entry in for the old west balloon fest. We had one of our deeds girls was, did a lot of the painting and had some other helpers. It looks, if you didn't notice, you should look, it looks really nice.
What, in the balloon on the back? Did there one back here?
Yeah, there was one back too.
They just got it, yeah, they just got that one done, it was right in time for the pre-ceremony, so it, and it's a good one, it was a good one for what you guys were doing.
Really?
Yeah.
You gotta use the door to see the door. Yeah, I guess so. Alright, well anyway, that's what I wanted to point out, that we had, we had an entry and we're very proud of the work that was done. I meant to have it when I sent out the agenda for Monday's meeting, to mention it enough, but I didn't. I know, well, I don't, I don't go, but I'm just, everybody's people would like to do. Did you guys say something about? No. Okay, anyway. I brought up this form, this is all, this is a spreadsheet we download from the Auditor of Public Accounts, I told you about that the other day. Couple of forms to note, I guess I'm not going to start with this one, we're going to look at the other one first, that I have to complete in order to set levies, give them the information they want in the, in the fashion that they want it, so they give it, they make it pretty simple. And, pink postcard, this was our, the spreadsheet they give us for that, you have to put in the prior year tax request, base limit percentage 2%, and then this real growth divided by prior year real, total real property valuation per assessor. This number I don't technically have, I'm throwing in last year's number, but I had the wrong number in here the other day. So our value would be 2.29. We cannot, if we want to stay out of pink postcard, we cannot increase over 14.5 million, property tax ask.
And that's still just-
But we can go to 14.9.
But that's a whole nother discussion.
Right.
This is to stay out of the pink postcard.
Not interesting.
This is only about the pink postcard.
Yeah.
And it's not, um, it's estimated at this point.
It's estimated at this point, because that real growth number, we don't know. And that Robert explained to us is, new buildings, new construction, you know, whatever, the value of that.
Maybe too?
I think it's, that's all part of that, so that's, that's my understanding, and he'll, we'll have that by August 20th, so. Anyway, um, because our tax ask is now sitting at like 18.8, while we are working through this process, but the other computation I was working, discussing with you is, in the past, the terminology was the lid, now it's our cap, sorry, thank you. So, we start off 14,178, that I'm supposed to put in the prior year property tax request, and this year we'll not have any information here, because this is information that could be loaded from what we're doing this year, would go into next year's, this section, so this is going to be zero, because this is a new form.
And that's statewide?
That's statewide.
And probably-
Yeah. Now, this one, um, down here, this is going to give us our cap. So, this is the number I tell you, this, up here 14,178 is what I say we levy, this is what the state says we levy, I mean, you can see it's like, what, $3,000 difference, I can't explain that, but-
And do you remember, Seward County said theirs didn't manage their return either?
Did they?
On that webinar?
No, I didn't, because I didn't hear the whole webinar, but it, I mean, it's just a couple thousand dollars difference, we're in the realm. And again, the growth percentage, I've plugged in last year's until I have this year's number, and last year's valuation comes up to .25, that's our increase due to growth, which is estimated at this point. Then, the state gives us inflation percentage, and whether we're going to, this year we get, we get an inflation percentage, I'm not sure we always get, it's based on that slice index that comes from, uh, a national firm out of St., St. Louis is what I remember from the December NACO meeting, and they-
It's not a pure inflation number, but there's two or three calculations that kind of-
Go into it, and it's, it's not just us, we aren't the only ones that have, it's not county specific.
No, that 517, I understand, is statewide, and they give it to us, and they'll always give us a number, and it'll be different every year.
That's my understanding. So, that number is 7.33, because I have a calculation in here that's going to take, what does it take? It takes certain values that come from up above, it's going to take property taxes levy, less any exceptions that you have to remove, and then take it times the inflation percentage. Anyway, that's calculated for me, nothing I had to do with that. And then we can start plugging in exceptions if we would choose to use them, and there's approved bonds, I was showing you that, I mean, if we needed to, if we needed more levying authority, you can put an amount here. The, the other areas declared emergency, which we don't have anything that would, we could claim in that area, safety services, this is where we've been hearing you could claim costs for your sheriff department. Maybe the 911, who else would we have? Detention center was kind of in the realm, they were checking to see if the qualified county attorney budget, public defender budget, and supportive service relating to imminent and significant threat to public safety that was not previously provided by the political safety division, political subdivision, yada yada, supportive and inter-local agreement relating to public safety, voter-approved increase, or, last one was prior used, un, prior year's unused property tax authority used this year. This came from the lid calculations brought forward, it's like 5% of your property tax ask, you can claim that. But what they warned is if you use any of these exceptions, next year, that number is going to go into a calculation and will be removed from what you can levy. So, they warrant to use this only in specific necessity situations. And, and that's what Candace was explaining to me, now, if you have like, or, you need to buy a bus, or a, a big car, or a sheriff's patrol car, and we are just short on our levying authority, we could probably plug in, because I know sheriff would put in some cars, $150,000. There must, there's something I have to do on this other, other schedule, but then that would give you a little bit more authority, and she was saying that wouldn't hurt too much, now if you start claiming the whole county attorney budget, 1.1 million, it's going to make a substantial difference to you next. But if you were so close, you can use one of these, and just be very aware that it could be impacted in the following years, okay? So, by using the prior year's property tax request authority used this year, we could actually increase our ask up to 15,656. Which was more than I told you the other day, because I had not plugged that 709,000. And the 18,895, that's just the, where I stand right now, okay? So, that's what I said, we tried to say, let's finalize our budget, we're just going to go with a 3.0, or 0.39 levy and do it, you can't, we're in violation, we are capped. I suppose.
So-
Does line 24 get taken away from you next year if you have a number there?
It's, Candace didn't think, didn't seem to think that. I don't know what to say, this is. So I'm coming up by using other exceptions if we needed to do it, but you see where it's coming, that now is 18 million, because I'm plugging numbers into these other lines.
So that line, um, 58, that's 700,000?
Yes.
That's, the nu, that's the things that we, um, I don't, I don't remember how to say it, but-
That's part of the lid exception, when we were voting or not vote, voting not to use that 1% increase every year.
Right.
That, we ended up with a little, little bit of excess tax authority.
If we use that, does it also fall under the pretext of that we would have to, or it'd come back to bite us?
It's my understanding. We can use up to 5% of it, which that's the 709,000 per schedules from the APA that I also, I mean, not that this means anything to you, but this comes from the Auditor of Public Accounts, they're telling me how much property taxes we levy, and what is the 5% of property taxes levy that I can use as unused authority? They, they just said, unused authority carry forward can choose not to increase property taxes by the amount of authority, but can carry forward unused authority to future budget years, that accumulation is limited to a maximum of 5% of total property tax request authority from the prior year. So, we don't have a carry forward. And they said it's not beneficial to max out carry forward as it is limited, and it's limited to 700,000. Will that have an impact? If we don't, thinking this calculation goes, so say I plugged in all those numbers, we're still going to have, and we aren't, say we, I, I gotta take the exceptions out of there, because then I can kind of skew in my numbers. So, we can go up as high as 15,656 with it in there, how about we, we come up to 14,800,000? Then we will have unused property authority for future years, so I don't think it's going to affect us, because we still will have some carry forward, we just can't go over the max. Cannot exceed amount on supporting Schedule 1.
So, the meat to pink postcard was 14,4, was it?
503.
14,503.
That stops the postcard, or that starts?
That stops, what stops, I mean, if we don't go above that, then-
I'm not afraid of that postcard, I guess, I mean, we're not talking about that much of increase.
So that's 14,5, and then, um, the next level in my thought process is 14,8.
On account of that.
And then the next level is adding that 700,000 is what, in, and that's 15,656, right?
And it might be a situation, if you don't use it, you'll lose it either way.
It's hard to hear.
If you don't use it, you might lose it.
I think we should incorporate, at least have it tied up, so it's here to work on. Gives you, it starts building your basis. Alright, it starts building that, so you move forward, you can't spend all of that, you can't use all of it, you can use a percentage of that.
Use a portion, but that's as much as we could use this year.
700.
Yeah.
And are you saying that 700,000 is 5%?
Or what we taxed last year, so 14,181,000.
Okay, it's 5%.
By adding that in, we can use, can we use that in the general fund? That could be our rate, increasing wages, we had to, not, not all of them. True bill, give us a build up. We're not working off of last year's wages, we gave a, we gave a raise last year, 3%, so we're spending 3.5, 3% more than we did last year, can't work out of that same budget. We've got to start 3% higher this year to give 3% again. If I give 3%, we're going to give 3% this year, if we give 3, because we gave 3 last year, that's 1/2% when you compound.
3% and we did 2.5%.
Then it's 3 and 3, because you have that compound, when you, because you're giving 3% on every one of those raises back, yeah?
But, yeah, but that's every year that that happens.
Every year, always comp. You're always, but then we, then we, people let her get steps, let her get compensated with steps, and-
Oh, I know. So, I think that was one of the big things that we wanted to know for our overall tax asking numbers, and then, um, just a couple things that I would recommend that we do here this evening, Steve's here, I know last night we talked about doing roads, possibly the commissioner's budget if we had time, and, um, but I think since Steve's here, and we ought to let him do his things while he's here, and I think that we can always do the commissioners.
There's plenty of other things to discuss.
The commissioner one should be easy once we get into it.
How do we, the commissioners, do, do we pay Jason's wages out of the commissioners' stuff, or that comes out of the general fund then?
Well, yeah, I don't know which fund, but-
It comes out of the general fund, and the account is called, it's 971, it's called the Administrative General Fund. We have a line for attorney fees.
Okay.
Yeah, that's-
I didn't know if that came out of our, I looked for it, I didn't find it, I didn't know about that.
No, my understanding is it doesn't, so.
I thought, well, maybe that's just going to start next year, getting things in the rear is not.
I guess if you wanted me to move it there, I could. Yeah, we have, right now I'm stuck in 100,000 for attorney fees, 100,000 for litigation.
While the-
The audit, ugh.
So when he bills, sometimes, every once in a while, there, um, some other staff people could have asked for advice or help, and the point being, it's not always commissioner stuff sometimes.
I see.
It's not.
I just, I was just wondering how it's-
I'm sure, because you guys interrupted quite a few questions his way, but, yeah, there have been others, I try to direct people when they have, review this contract question to Nerma, because it doesn't cost, it costs us, we're already paying plenty to Nerma, we should use their resources.
That's right. I think anything that Nerma, NACO can help us with, they should be first, and then-
Absolutely, so, but on the other side, it's, um, they aren't going to build a contract for us, they will review a contract that's already there, that's Nerma, anyway.
Okay.
Alright.
But with that, I'm suggesting we look at roads.
Do it?
No, let's just tell him to go home. He would be happy to.
Yeah, it's Friday night.
Oh, okay.
Hey Steve, before you get started, you need to tell these guys who you hired today. Whenever you hired that lady out there.
Julie Walker?
Oh, Catapunk, Bob's Rock, your shop today, and woman, the girl out there, boy, he's just like-
Yeah, she's everywhere.
Steve, do you talk to anybody?
No, I haven't.
I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make up a story, I got some listening.
You what? You what?
So, did I hear it correctly?
Asking questions a lot.
Were your people around?
Yeah, going in and out of the office, yeah.
Oh really? Aren't they going off today?
Some come in and do an emergency.
Did you fill your office position already?
Uh, we will, she starts Tuesday, I understand, so. We had offered it to one, and then she decided not to accept it, so we moved on to the next one, and it sounds like she'll start Tuesday. So Julie, Julie Walker is her name.
I know Julie Walker.
Yeah?
That's a good one. She's from Marlboro. That's a good one. She'll be a good hire.
Is she from Marlboro? She's like, older than me.
She grew up in Marlboro, yeah.
Did she? No, I don't.
Isn't she tall, dark, gotta go?
Yeah, yeah, I recognize her from somewhere, but I don't know where, I've seen her at somewhere.
Weber?
She, like, manages the Weber Center, she can go, she can now do that part-time, so she wants something full-time, because she can do that two evenings a week, she said, so, yeah, she's coming.
She grew up in Marlboro, her grandpa, Carl Walker, yeah. Carl walks a lot, yeah.
I'll let, we start?
Do you want to start with the easy budgets, budgets, or just the road one? Because the other ones are pretty simple.
You can start with the other, I gave them weed, I gave them, I had a buyback, and I didn't do the flood stuff.
Those probably haven't changed a lot, have they, Steve?
No, the only difference in weeds, of course, is the employee's insurance went up, and his wage that goes up, I believe that was the only difference in weed. What's that?
You got another increase?
Oh, well, we took out the income part. That's the two, that's the two differences in weed, my salary's the same, what we're, the chemicals the same, so those are the two differences, differences in the weed budget.
What is that? What was added?
40, uh-
40,000.
That spraying equipment, that wasn't in there.
Is it gone?
It's in there now, but it wasn't. That was like last year's, we had it in there, we took it out.
I tell you, I'm just looking at my spreadsheet, confused.
But you can leave it in there if it's alright, I'll find something.
Well, but I think that makes things look a little easier for us, because it could be off by 35,000, so they're-
Right.
You serious? You okay with that, 201?
Yep, yeah, that was the differences, was the insurance for the employee.
Oh, we gotta change that too.
I don't know what I brought.
You're not keeping, this is the weed budget? You got it? And then what I did?
I'm not seeing, am I, am I on the wrong page?
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I am.
This, I just changed 12,000. Can you flip it over? I started it from the back, I had 40,000, but he said, well, that was last year, recently, I just took it out, you know, weed, $40,000, it's great.
But you took it out?
So that would make your total, where is it? It's to be on the backside of the weed budget. Ow! Under the 5s.
It's under the 5s.
What's your new number here?
New number, 202,374. Again? Again? 202,374.
What was it last year?
200,281,65 was budgeted, we actually spent 1,66.
Can we get this budget down to where the other one was, being your actual is so much lower, and you took out 40? Is there any way we can get that budget down close to the actual?
Where, I'm sorry?
Your actual, your 35,000. Carryover, I don't like carryover, we got too many, we got too many wheel degrees.
But you know what you changed it, was to add on some attorney fees, didn't you?
Yes, which we didn't use, but-
That was kind of a thing.
We're gonna need that in there too, I think, because we're gonna be sued here.
Jason is gonna, is working on some things.
Jason's working on some things for him, and we just started 5,000.
That amount, that amount was 5,000, um, I guess, yeah, there's legal fees. Weed controlled by others, 5,000, that-
Another thing.
Yeah, that can come out of much.
Are you sure?
Well, no, because that's if we do do a enforced spray, and we have to pay somebody to go spray somebody's field, that's where that's where it would come from.
Yes.
We haven't, we haven't done it yet, but-
That's good, just okay.
Right, so-
But how, how about the 10,000?
And that 5,000, depending on the size, if it's a 160 acre field, that may not cover it, so.
How about the 10,000 under miscellaneous?
Yeah, that can probably be, we cannot, I think you should be able to knock that down pretty good. We don't do too much miscellaneous in there, because we only had, what, 14 and 124 the year before.
15, you could call it 15 dollars, probably.
Yeah, I mean, if you did lose a couple hundred bucks, it might be alright.
They'll give us like an 8,000.
It's what?
You take that out, I mean, he'll be, based on 8,000, right?
Yeah, he's below last year budget, that what you just said, except for the revenue, we thought, well, maybe we could do some commercial work.
Well, we could, if, if Steve chooses to.
But that's what he says, you know, I don't know, we-
We weren't able to hire anybody else this year, we just got one guy in his house.
That's why you're short.
That's why we're not doing anything, I mean, he's, he stays busy doing right aways. We never did get anybody hired for that.
Did you get through a fair amount of chemical anyway?
Oh yeah, yeah, so, um, last year, did we spend the 35 last year? Yeah, we spent a little over 35,000 last year on the chemical, 35 budgeted, so, and we'll probably be there again today.
Did you pretty much use that chemical?
Well, we still have some, we're still using it.
As much as we go, yeah.
Okay. And then we'll, we'll have, we'll have some carryover through winter.
We used to get 30, 40,000 carryover back, because we would, we didn't use it that much. Looked like we was really making money, but we weren't getting nothing done.
I just were really very sick. I just thought he's very sick.
Let me be sure I understand what we're saying. So the total expenditures-
What's your total now?
What, you said this shows 200, but it really meant 202.
And she took off another 10.
Now I'm down to 192.
192.
374.
And then-
I guess I should be putting this in because I-
The official's request, which is your number, right, Lisa?
I should be changing the other column, you're right. The official's request was what you're seeing, and then, yeah, if I went and did that right, it should have been.
And so what is that bottom line number?
192, 374.
So that's 1,000, or 10,000 less than that, or just 1,000, 1,000 less than that. I'll wait until tomorrow.
So, Steve's number is 192, and your number's 192, basically?
Yeah, because I, I didn't change the break.
And last year's 166, actual, but we budgeted 185.
Because we had revenue that we aren't going to be in.
Do you have one guy's labor figured in this, right, Steve?
I'm talking the salary part up there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you didn't hire nobody out of this one, you hired somebody out of Road and Bridge then?
Right, but we still pay, when he comes to weed side, we pay him out of the weed.
But you still pay one.
Okay, then in October, he'll go back to getting paid out of road.
I got you.
So this is a, this is a six month, six month pay, I guess.
It'd probably be more than just one person.
And yeah, the, the way it, the way it's set up right there is more than one person, it's hopefully to have two. So when you look at that 39, you're thinking, gee, one person made 3,000 in six months, well, that's set up for two people.
They all want that job.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be alright.
So, then- So, then... If we go down to the very bottom, the revenue stuff, again, tell me, on the far right, it says one sixty-five, and that should be what? One sixty-five, or what?
Um, it should be still one ninety-two, because we, we do not do commercial spraying. We only have one guy working. We aren't billing for our services. We're only doing county business. In past years, they used to do commercial work. And since we have changed to being under Steve, we don't, we haven't been, had the manpower, or we were trying to take care of our own and police the noxious weed.
And, I mean, I hate to put a number in there. We may be able to do some. You know, this next coming year, if we get somebody hired. I did go and get certified to do weed-free inspections, so the county can get paid for that. If somebody calls and wants their, hey, weed free inspected, then I can go out and do that, and we can set up a charge for that, to get some revenue, too. But, I mean, I don't, I don't know what to put in there for a number, I guess.
Not comfortable enough to budget for.
Right, right.
You know, and the big thing I had heard was weird, for us to go out and do commercial spraying is we are, the county, going against private people, trying to do their business. And is that where we want to be? Like, doing your spraying assessment, that's a different thing.
That's what's happening. We'd rather, rather let them contract and do what we're mandated to do.
It's a low priority for us.
Right, right. Our goal is to, you know, enforce the Noxious Weed Control Act, was to make sure the landowners are spraying theirs and to take care of ours, and make sure that we do our annual reports. That's what we...
Yeah.
The same concept as Twin Cities Development being a rental.
Yeah. Yeah, the, well, and so I think we agree that if we're just talking what I'm gonna call standard, run-of-the-mill spraying, that is simple to contract out to ag-type people, then, um, we probably, I don't see any reason for us to get aggressive in that area.
We shouldn't be their competitors.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah.
After cutting the guy trying to...
We would always want to send them to someone else. Now, if there was some kind of specialized situation that they couldn't maybe get easily, locally,
That would be the...
Then that might be different.
That would be the weed-free certification stuff, because you have to be a county weed superintendent to do that.
To do that, okay.
So that is something. That would be an example of that.
Back in prior years, Lisa, on twenty-two, twenty-three actual, you've got sixty-six, seven, thirty-one on spraying assessments. That was an income?
That was what?
Was that, was that when, that was the custom work?
You know, I know they did some, because...
Well, they did, but they weren't getting none of ours done. They weren't... You know, we had to call in here. I called in and wanted spraying done at my place.
Years ago, they had, they had two people in the office and two people out spraying, and...
Now they did it for our church.
Yeah, it was quite a bit bigger deal. Seven, eight, nine, ten years ago.
Yeah, that's why you had to call in and they come spray.
Yeah.
Then I think, once COVID hit, I think that kinda stopped.
I, I think before that, before I was the commissioner, I called and asked if they'd come out spray. He said, we don't do that.
And, and he was, yeah, he was doing a lot. Just kind of, we backed off. And he, we couldn't hire people for, you know, summertime positions, even before COVID.
Yeah, it was Jeff and Stan Promp was at the other office guy, and then Gene Trackwell?
Trackwell was...
Was one of the spray guys. Then he hired, one year he had actually two others beside him spraying, too.
You bet, you don't have...
But then, you know, he was just looking for summer help, so that really kind of dampens your...
So if we take that out of the revenue part, does that change anything up on the expense part?
No. Really didn't.
Yeah.
It's he's going to do it.
Well, I don't think it did, but I'm saying should it? Things like chemical costs.
I was talking about that. You're talking about you're spraying the rightaways in the county property is where a lot of that is going, right?
Yes, rightaways.
You showed that thirty-five thousand assessment in there last year. You're taking it out this year?
Yes.
Is there, what was the reason we took it out?
We just had that conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm not here to agree with...
Because we're not gonna do it for other people. We don't plan to do it for other people. So, yeah, I'm seeing it under what I call Steve's line, but I'm not seeing it under Lisa's line. Right? And we're agreeing that we're taking it out on the revenue side.
Because we just said we're not gonna go do it for...
Right.
Making care of our own and making sure other people are getting their stay in care of.
Right. And so, down at the very bottom tax requirement line, what does it change that to? On yours, Lisa?
One ninety-two, three seventy-four.
Which matches above there. Okay. But still... Yeah, in the overall scheme of things, we're thirty thousand higher than last year, basically, or twenty-six or something like that.
I think last year we had this discussion, and Steve's like, well, maybe we can do some commercial. But then he had two guys for a short period of time, then he had one guy. Had the manpower to do anything beyond what we needed. Now you're hitting second year with the, you give a property owner notice, you gotta take care of your weed and take care of it. They get a second notice.
This year, we had just one full-time guy and no applicants for another. Here, it's been posted all year, so...
Or you had someone you lost for a month?
Not on the weed side.
Oh, didn't you? I thought you forgot.
Oh, yeah, I guess we did. Yeah, anybody can show up.
And weed control used to be its own fund, so you see transferred from general, that was under Judge Schleitowitz, and now we're all under the general fund.
Say that again? It was where?
It was on its own fund, like detention center has its own fund, comm center has its own fund, within the scheme of county bookkeeping. And when Jeff managed weed, we had it separately in its own fund, and general fund would have to support his budget.
It was outside of general fund?
Yeah, and I would have to move money.
And now it's part of general fund, in its own, still in its own fund, but it's under the general fund umbrella?
Yeah, exactly. I saw where, I saw this under many other counties that they handle it under general. It's like, why are we doing the extra process to move money when we just operate under general? So, I think it's okay.
And we just did that last year, right?
Twenty-two, twenty-three. We got total revenue. What's, can you explain this one?
Actual, over here? Okay, this was when it was its own fund, and how we managed this as its own fund is I had to always come out to zero. General fund had to support that year at two to two seventy-one thousand, because we started off with twenty-seven thousand. Jeff thought we were going to have, we could bring in ninety-five thousand, which you could see ninety-five turned up.
This is what they told me.
That's what they were told to budget.
Which is more than we're forgetting today.
Yeah, and over here, and see how it ended up? We budgeted, that's what we wanted to do.
The, um... I'm looking at, down. Down at the very bottom line, the one sixty-six versus one ninety-two. Right? What, um...
Actually, the one sixty-six is last year's tax ask, or how much taxes paid.
That's how much we actually, that was actual money spent.
Yeah, and out of the general fund, a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Right?
And this year, we're looking at one ninety-two. And where are, are the differences? I think you're gonna ask that. Twenty thousand more than the twos. The categories of expenses, you have the ones are the salaries, twos are basic operations, threes are supplies, fours, fives are capital items. Biggest difference, I'm looking at between actual, say, salaries seem pretty level.
You know, we're, we're spending twenty-two less on, on official salaries.
Right there, ten thousand dollars for your legal fees and weed control by others, which speaks...
What do you think?
The miscellaneous you didn't change there yet.
I changed it here, though.
Oh, okay, okay.
Typically, technically, I'm supposed to leave this the same way you presented it to me. Any changes should be made in this column, and I started off today doing it wrong. Changing your numbers, so... And that's okay. They just, that's the negotiating part.
Go back up, so why is that still twenty thousand higher than last year? Where's the twenty thousand?
Twenty, which, twenty thousand, the one sixty-six to the one ninety-two?
Uh, keep going up. That one right there. You, you have fifty-one thousand, nine eighty-four.
Oh, up here.
And expenditures were, ready?
Make sure my cell... Those numbers now...
Actually, I was looking at the other spots.
I can already hear you going.
Really? Oh.
I'm on my ear.
Okay. That's why I'm, every time we're in a meeting...
I come in underwater.
Thirty-one thousand to fifty-one thousand, is that what you're asking me, Steve?
Right.
Ten thousand of it right here is legal fees and weed control by other.
Right, okay.
Where's the other ten? Because I'm looking just... Jumped out of this. Right here, you've got five, nine thousand compared to...
Okay, so, um, we could probably like the equipment repair for the pickups. Go ahead, you can probably cut that in half, because we did quite a few bit repairs to them last year. And it helps when we just have to kind of buy parts, because...
Candy Crush, road thing kind of works.
And you know, you're...
Same with the spraying equipment. Go ahead and cut that one in half, too.
Give me a number.
Four thousand, right there. Oh, back up.
Oh, you're looking, I would...
There you go. Uh, two thousand, because we did fourteen eighty last year. I know we did one pump, so, so far, but...
And the NERMA stuff, you guys, that's gonna all be how it's allocated by NERMA, and I haven't gotten to changing. County owes it either way, no matter where it's allocated. If you didn't get it here, probably get it in this one.
And that's the insurance part?
Yeah, that's calculation that comes to me from NERMA, and I haven't corrected any of their information that maybe was given to them. No matter what we owe it, they're just gonna put it in another department of ours.
All right, what's the total? Did you get it down?
So go, go down to printing and publishing, I think. What do we have in that one?
Five?
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen.
And it was nine twenty-five, so you can drop a few hundred off of that, yeah.
They're gonna need some of that.
Yeah, dude, we have two ads we have to post, and they average about almost five hundred bucks a ad. Okay.
Are you just in columns?
Yeah. Oh, they're, they're big. They're a six by nine noxious weed thing. They're, they gotta be a certain size.
You know?
I didn't change, Steve, did you ever talk about that?
Yeah, you could probably, with just, if I I had another employee, that fuel would be higher, probably, because you're gonna have that much. I don't know that I'll have another one, I guess. In that respect, you could probably, you know, knock it down to seventy-five.
You just...
I think that's about it.
Down to one eighty-five?
Sarcasm, wasn't it?
One sixty-six?
One sixty-six. A little higher, but we predicted no revenue, because we have no revenue.
Right.
Didn't remember we got...
One eighty-five, something.
One eighty-five, thirty-seven-four, oh nine. Not to lose this. Stay.
So... You know, where, where we've talked about shooting for that two and a half percent, two and a half, three percent, and this again is ten percent. It's kind of that same situation we had with who was it, emergency management last night? Where the overall dollars don't seem to be that much, but the percentage seems to be a kicker.
Twelve percent now? I don't remember what it was before we started. I gave you a lever. It was forty-six percent?
Before you took out that forty?
Yesterday, yeah, before we did all the work we did for today.
Now it's down to about ten percent, a little over ten, I think.
Well, this is like when setting values and you're putting seven percent on a half million dollar house compared to my hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. So like, you should have, if you're under this amount of total, you could have pride. If you're this amount, oh, in between, another percent.
I know, Jim. I see what you're saying, that it would go along with what we were just talking about, wouldn't it?
Hey, what, you wanna move on?
I guess we can. You're gonna have those new percentages when this is all said and done, and you, then you're gonna have...
Are you gonna keep updating this to us? Okay.
That'll be...
I'll give you a new one Monday.
Because if, when we get down to the, uh...
I gave you one today.
To the bottom line, then, um...
There, you can see what I think it started on.
I have yesterday's, today's, too.
The...
Yeah.
You're all good. I don't need another one. I just...
What line is Road and Bridge?
Road and Bridges, you know, that's right. It's, um...
No, no.
Three hundred on here. It's gonna be lower, because he's got his own fund. Are you ready to move to Road and Bridge?
Now, give me that number. Is it one eighty-five or seven?
I shouldn't have said Road and Bridge. I mean roads.
Roads, or you want weed?
Yeah. Sorry.
Seven thirty-three.
All right, yeah, I was looking for it. Yeah, and that's where you're saying it was forty-six, now we're down, in my opinion, to about eleven or so.
Oh, yeah, twelve percent. Okay, you're talking percent.
Yeah.
Not dollar amount.
Yeah, no percentage.
Twelve point one-six percent.
Which is quite a bit higher than I was certainly hoping for, but again, we talk about dollars, actually, dollars doesn't seem so bad. And then that daughter formula that Kelly talked about might come into play as we
Go through.
settle out in this whole deal.
And like you said, we're, we're kind of reformatting this department and its mission.
Yeah.
Right? And we're looking at what, why county has a weed department. And it's to control the toxic weed. It isn't to go out and make money for the county. True. Beautiful, that's great.
True, and that's where not doing that also impacts your tax assets, because you're not that ready, so...
Like it's a mission. All right, you guys.
All right.
Move for roads?
Yeah. I need some...
Which one? Roads. Budge, it's actually, we have a Steve operates out of his own fund, but his tax... Steve operates out of his own fund, but his tax, so the, he budgets all of his expenses, he gets what, how much allocation dollars, three million?
Yeah, like three point six million a year.
Other revenue to support his budget, but then the general fund or property taxes support a good portion of his fund too. Takes over what isn't already covered. Allocation money and other.
Has to be a minimum of twenty-five percent of that allocation, cause that's at the end of, in October, we do that annual report. And it shows what your minimum contribution was, it always has to be at least that twenty-five percent of whatever that allocation is. Like the few, last couple of years, we've been up and pushing fifty percent, it's been pretty good, so.
The allocation number.
Right, no, that's the, the, the general, the tax asking, where they're given over that twenty-five percent that they're supposed to.
The allocation money, not your total budget.
Right, of the allocation.
Alright. Road and bridge, you guys don't have that in front of you?
Yep.
Starting with the ones, you got all the payroll info, then we go into the operating expenses, supplies.
So on that payroll just alone, the insurance by itself is over a ten percent increase. So I have like a workman's comp and the health and let's see, the dental, workman's comp and the health is a hundred fifty by itself.
What's the red numbers mean?
That came from NERMA, it, it was kind of more of a thing for me, that's the updated NERMA number that was paid much for workers' comp in July.
It's like our workman's comp doubled this year, so. There's nothing we can really.
Your budget doubled?
Let's not be negative about it yet.
No, I, no, I was just looking at.
So the two section. Starts with postal services and goes through those. All of those are consistent until you get down to two dash fourteen hundred and fifteen hundred. Drop those some more from the previous year, twenty-five thousand apiece. Moment, what happens later on in these discussions, that might have to go.
Which items?
Go back up, that is equipment repair parts and labor, two dash fourteen hundred and two dash fifteen hundred. We've been having good luck with uh.
With your grading.
The graders and so. That, depending what goes on, that might have to change, so. As we discuss. So, um, and then you go, I mean, the rest of that is real similar to last year's, I mean, I think pretty much carried basically all those numbers just forward. In total on that whole two column, I show a twenty-three thousand dollar decrease in that whole call. And that is just simply the lowering those parts and labor, repair labor budgets.
You got fifty percent increase in overtime here.
Yes, I increased overtime, what, twenty-five thousand? Right, and that is, that number hasn't been increased probably in seven, eight years, wages has been. We, last, not winter, but a couple winters ago, when we had the big winter, we were pushing that number, and it has not been increased since.
We only spent thirty-two.
Yeah, but if you get a bad winter, we're gonna go over that, and we were close to that blizzard here, we were right, right to it. And we haven't adjusted the overtime, the, where we've adjusted the wages. So you know, even though we've increased wages maybe two, three dollars an hour, that increases their overtime pay of course, we've never, we've never adjusted that. So I'm just thinking, you know, we've had some calm winters. These last two, three winters, if we get a winter, I'm gonna be over in the overtime if I not gonna hack down. It's an option, you can knock it back down, but when we go over, I guess.
But you actually only spent seventeen last year.
Last year, yeah.
The year before is when we had that bad one, oh, two years before.
Yep, it was two years before.
Two years before, it was forty-three we paid. But we're still under the fifty, which, but then we've increased like he should.
But yeah, we've increased everybody's wages, so. And that fifty thousand, as far as I could go back, has been there for a while. Well, that's why that one's there. We can put it back, if we have a winner and we get that fifty thousand, I guess we.
Alan, that's why we have general fund, that's why everything's doing. We gotta figure it out. You gotta get from point A to point B with all you've done.
That might be one number we could come down some, just based on five-year track record.
Yeah, we can knock it out, yeah, we can knock it back down fifty.
Even if we brought it down to sixty, I think that would cover it, Steve, if we'd bring her to sixty.
It all just depends on winner, it really does, so I agree.
Fatten up some of these other columns.
When you do the four hundred and eighty, you did the four hundred and eighty thousand, you're doing twelve thousand dollars a person for the whole year. Right, and how many employees did that?
Like forty.
Do you have that many in staff right now?
Pretty anyway, not forty.
How many people is that, five? How many people at max do you hire? Three, four, three, five.
Probably average around twenty-seven.
Do you?
So if you call it thirty times twelve, you could do thirty then.
Including.
Is that the number now?
It's twelve thousand dollars per FTE.
Cut us down about a hundred, twenty.
Yeah, that's big.
So, what was the number last year?
Eleven thousand four hundred. For FTE, is that what you're looking for?
I'm gonna divide the three seventy-six divided by eleven thousand four hundred. Well, that'd have been, we, we spent as if we had thirty-two employees, I believe.
Is that what, three hundred?
I believe, I believe, I need to do it again.
That was a genius move, Mark.
There you go.
Actual divided by what was the number per person, yeah.
Well, unless. You are spending like you have thirty-three.
Three eighty-four.
Even if we did thirty, thirty-three relative.
Rather than forty, that would help.
Were you counting your office?
And, and then many times you're.
Each shop.
You may have a, a spot empty, well, whether it's empty or not.
And your mechanic?
You don't pay unless we have somebody in.
In the position.
That thirty's gonna be a pretty good.
Okay, so yeah, if you had.
You think thirty's a good average, are you good with, well, he's saying thirty will be probably okay, cause he, he does have turnover.
So if you have some months where you, you're short of a person or two or three, then that's gonna save you as well. And.
How many physicians do you have open right now? Physicians do you have open right now?
One, just one. She starts, she's there.
So Steve, when you put three eighty-seven six in that line item, and then Lisa changed it to four eighty.
I didn't change it.
Well, that's.
I changed it to three seventy-two. You have a, you have a ruler, Mark?
I do. But I don't need one for that.
Three seventy-six was the actual number.
Yeah, I'm on the health insurance line. And his number that he budgeted, which is the far right column, the way I understand it, was three hundred eighty-seven six.
That was last year.
Right.
That's what you're saying.
This year's ask is in the middle.
Right. I understand, and I call that your number, and maybe I'm wrong with that.
That's his new number, Steve's new number, what Steve proposes.
Budget expense twenty-four, twenty-five is what we budgeted on last year. Actual came out to three seventy-six two. You would, you would need to point it out, I know.
No, I understand that. I guess now, and, cause I was thinking of it differently, but. So the numbers that. Whatever Steve plugged into this, in his numbers, they don't really show here, do they?
None of, none of her show, none of her adjustments show.
Yeah, but I'm adjusting to, I, I give you Steve's ask. Okay, that's the official's request.
Okay.
And then as we go through this process of working with Steve right now, and I'm making changes, I am opening up two new columns. County board proposed budgets. That's when I'm fixing that one, and then. The final column is the adopted.
That county board is what we're, what numbers we're asking to go to.
It's not on the paper.
It's not on our paper.
Right, it's not on your paper.
Cause right now, what, when you, I printed that paper, all three columns were the same. And that's what Linda Grunberg taught me is, that's what they wants to see, is that, okay, you started here, you negotiated it, and this is where you ended. There's been a process. She did explain that.
So your three eighty-four is for thirty-one employees?
Yeah, thirty-two now.
Thirty-two.
I keep bumping it up, I won't leave it there.
I would say that's a safe, safe number. Yeah, that's quite.
We go to three eighty-one?
Yeah.
When you finished last year at three seventy-six, makes me kind of think that.
And when people.
Three ninety-four?
People come and go like.
Three eighty. Okay, you guys. But you're coming back.
He might go home.
He's, he's running.
Retirement always looks higher. Okay. Comes up to what, one nine five one? Hundred and thirty-one thousand. I have all those numbers at the top, right, and I'm thinking times six point seven five percent to get the social security, or the retirement share. That gets more like one thirty-five, okay?
Seven thousand dollars.
Mark, will you make sure that outside handle turns?
Social Security is actually higher than. So between the two, it's probably washed out.
Yeah, just leave it alone.
So that pulled a hundred and twenty thousand off where we were.
What's that?
Did that pull a hundred and twenty thousand off what we were?
Just a hundred so far.
Just a hundred.
Yeah.
Health insurance, I think it is, yeah.
I thought it was a hundred and twenty. A million.
I started going down that, I better not change that on. When you go look at social security, if somebody puts more into their HSA, five hundred dollars a month, it always reduces how much is taken out of your paycheck. So say seven point six five, but it doesn't always weigh down the same. Because people do different things with their pay, so. Cause our pre-tax benefits. Pre-tax benefits, it's not gonna reduce their wages.
So that, um. Instead of the two point eight nine nine million, you're down to two point seven something.
Two million seven seven eight seven sixty-two.
Seven seven eight.
Okay, can we move on?
Can, yeah. The two columns, I guess, any question about those? Really, the only difference is, like I said, I lowered the parts and the labor part, for now. And at the end of that one, it shows, at least mine does, a twenty-two thousand dollar decrease from the year before, is that what yours shows?
Seven ninety-four to seven seventy-one, came in at six twenty-five. What radials do you repair?
Our two ways, ones are.
So that, the request is less than what he had last year. Quite a bit less from what he had twenty-three, twenty-four. But a good. Fifteen percent higher than actual last year, right? Apparently he did pretty good with expenses last year.
We saved quite a bit last year on the, I think on the, on the labor part. For our own mechanic. Big difference there.
Our insurance went up.
I guess, I guess moving on then on the three columns. Those are all consistent, gravel like you have the four hundred thousand. Supplies. Fuel, I'm keeping it to five hundred, I think we only did about four hundred last year. And once again, you get a bad winter, that fuel is gone.
What's fuel doing, is it just holding there?
It's kind of holding, yeah.
It didn't, gone up and ain't gone down.
Just kind of sitting there, yeah, yeah. That's why I didn't do anything with fuel, so, and that, you get a winner, it's gonna take that, you go through a hundred thousand.
I kind of thought it would.
It's kind of weather, I guess it's kind of weather related in some of this, your numbers.
I thought it would have started down by now, I sure have hopped in a, so.
Uh, the new one I do have in here for forty-five thousand is right at the bottom of my page, I don't know what yours is, but it's three dash oh three oh five. They have forty-five thousand in there, three dash oh three oh five. Signals.
I've seen that.
And that is to purchase a couple of message boards, state bid. What do you see beside the deals, so you know, roads maybe icy, it'd be a nice safety thing to have out there for us when we're chip sealing it like.
Are they signboards or signal lights?
They're signboards, yeah, they're message, message boards. Uh, when we chip seal, we could put one on each end, you know, slow down, loose gravel type things. So those are just kind of a safety thing to have out there, so.
Do we do anything with those guys like we do with CAT, can we lease purchase any of that stuff, like over a two-year period?
No, this is through state bids, so not through state bid, you can't.
You gotta go there.
Yeah, so. And not that. It wouldn't, it wouldn't pay for all of it, anyway, you only, like, two thousand, but, two thousand better not.
And not that, like, saying this or encouraging this, but it certainly would be an item that we could save till towards the end of the year and see if we make sure we don't have a bad winter and all that kind of stuff. If we did, then we could hold off on that for a year or something like that.
As you get towards the end of the budgets or something.
The fact that maybe you build it into this whole picture and that changes our number, so.
Payment marking is about seventy-eight thousand, seventy-five thousand I had in that line item, so. Overall, the threes, I showed it's about a thirty-five thousand dollar increase, and of course, the message boards are in there for. That's your increase. That's your increase rate, so.
And again, his budget certainly is, um, when it comes to the end, end of the year, they zero out and we start again.
No.
No.
He carries it forward. He's in his own fund. His money stays in the road fund.
And we need to have carryover, we need to carry over five hundred thousand a year, or we can't pay July bills. So NERMA's, I got it here, what, two hundred and fifty four thousand at the first of July, when it comes out, so. I got payroll coming at July, so, I mean, we have to carry over five hundred thousand dollars or we're gonna be hurting, so. We're down, we carried over six eighty one this year, I think believe is the amount. And we're, we're sitting right now, we're, on my deal, on my cash file, it shows we have a hundred and eighty eight thousand sitting in there, so. We're chip sealing and we get a bill in a couple of weeks for oil, I may be asking Lisa for some money. Because, yeah, we have to carry over that much, if we don't carry over that much, we're gonna.
Well, I was looking there, that bottom of the page was, we budgeted one point five, we spent one point one, so that's a four hundred thousand dollar carryover right there in that category.
Are you again?
You just hit the bottom of this. See, are you on C one five?
Yeah.
Bottom of page, C one five.
You're looking at the six thirty one mark?
I'm looking at, um, the budgeted for twenty four, twenty five was one point five, one two. And then, um, our actual for that was one point one two one. So basically it's four hundred thousand dollars that didn't get spent.
He's looking at all of the, the total of the threes. Oh, you're just looking at the threes, okay. Yeah, but you moved to the carryover. Okay.
The threes.
One point five is all.
So yeah, you're right, that'd be what didn't get spent, so we were. You have the actual up there for like gravel?
On threes?
So his is one of the funds that does carry over, yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
General contributes.
Like fuel, we, we budgeted five hundred, we only use four hundred, of course that helps the carryover a hundred for the next year or whatever. Okay, the four dash of one hundred, so equipment rental, you can drop that one back down to the fifty, it's not seventy five. Then on to the five columns, I guess, if everybody's ready, the big ones? Lisa's like, yes. Uh, five dash oh two hundred, buildings. Uh, you probably have forty, but it should be fifty five. That's the quote I got. We have that big lean two enclosure out there that faces to the south, that is a quote to enclose that in with overhead doors. So we can park equipment in there and not have the pigeons tear everything up because it's full of pigeons. So there's a little enclosure above the deal, they'll close that off and then put overhead doors on it so we can. Building's been there forever and the pigeons have. Yes, so if you park anything in there, which we do, you gotta kinda ease into it with gloves and take it over the pressure washer before you can ever take it out. Yeah, uh, so, and it's just a place to store stuff out of the weather and get it out of the deal. I think that's been kind of on the back books to try and do for quite a while. I put it back in there with Kurt wanting to use some room and stuff, so that's why I have it back in there. Equipment, so this is the biggest change, is the equipment in here. This is the part where I said it might affect the parts and labor. So, I have pickups in there, I have a hundred thousand, I can get two, uh, four wheel drive, three quarter ton pickups on state bid for just under fifty. Our pickups are shelved, I need more than two. Each shop could use two, I'm start, just hoping to start with two. I got one that needs a six thousand dollar transmission that has two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per miles on it. We parked it for now. I'm at a, do I spend six thousand dollars on a two thousand twelve pickup with two hundred and fifty thousand miles on it when the motor and the pickup still have two hundred and fifty thousand miles on them? You know, and we have nine pickups like that, we have three pickups in each shop, every one of them has something like that, whether it's the engine or a transmission or a a rear end, and they're all kind of at that dilemma, do you, you know, you got antifreeze dumping and oil of one, we keep driving it, keep doing it, but it's gonna go one day, you know? Do you spend that kinda money to fix a twenty five or two thousand fives, two thousand three half ton pickups? Two wheel drives that have just served their purpose, so. That is to hopefully start replacing a few and getting them out of there. You know, I, I hate to spend six thousand dollars for a transmission to have it put in and then two weeks later the engine goes, cause it's still got two hundred and fifty thousand miles on the engine. Some of those pickups are over three hundred thousand.
There's a need to try to take many further than that.
So that's one of them there, the next one, a truck, that's the same with the dump truck, I have a dump truck in Minotary, the oil samples are coming back bad. It's gonna need a, need an engine here. We're nursing it along, changing the oil, you know, as often as we can, but it always comes back with antifreeze in it, it's gonna need an engine. It's a Mercedes diesel that's in it. We did one of those five, six years ago, they're throwaway diesels, you have to order a crate diesel, a crate engine, it comes from Mexico, and have it put in, it was like fifty thousand dollars to have that done. So my same example is that, it's a two thousand five Freightliner, three hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, do you spend fifty thousand dollars on a truck and at the end of the day, the transmission and the whole truck has three hundred and fifty thousand miles on it? So. The next one, the industrial tractor. You could probably take that one out, I would be, hate to, but you can take it out, and the only reason I put that in there was really efficiency. Uh, to give you an example, we had to replace a bridge up on, uh, north of Lake Oil earlier this year. If you guys remember the guy that wanted to take all those loads of Sugar Factory cinders over the bridge, we had to replace the deck on it. We didn't know how to get ahold of all the ranchers up there, so we simply took one of our signs and wrote on marker on it, "Bridge will be closed this week." Repairs, call the office. A few ranchers called in, so we told them what was going on, we had to repair to be closed, you know, at least a week for us to redo this two span bridge. They would have to use the ore road, which is just to the east, and it's kind of just a trail road to get up that way, you can get up there to it, but you gotta have a four wheel drive. So in hopes of doing this, we arranged it with them, they were all good, they had their arrangements made, whatever they were gonna do to get up and back where they wanted. Instead of taking a week, I rented a CAT three twenty six, I think it was, with a thumb on it, a bigger loader with a thumb on it. And that we could get that done, instead of taking a week, it took us a day and a half, we were in and out of there and had that bridge back open. So this is more for efficiency, I guess, time.
What do you need to reach too when we're cleaning borrow pits, that little, uh, machine?
Well, this also has the bigger reach, you know, you get out on these, the drains we have and stuff, uh, that little John Deere one sixty doesn't have the reach that that. So we rented that one for, for a month and helped dig our bigger ditches like that and stuff, and plus like that bridge, that was a day and a half, we actually got calls from those guys. Appreciative of how fast it went and that, so. That is the purchase price, that two eighty, we can trade ours in and they would give us eighty nine thousand for ours trade in, if we were interested. Like I say, that's, I guess you consider that more of a Christmas gift than. We can live without it, but ideally, you know, it's gonna take, it takes longer, when you can do a bridge repair to, two span timber deck in a day and a half, as opposed to a week.
How much does it cost you to rent it?
Uh, this one?
What's for that one month for one? You said you rented.
Uh, what was it? Can't tell, I'm not gonna even throw it out there.
That's alright.
They're about six thousand a week, aren't they?
Yeah, I was thinking eight, but I don't wanna throw it out there, I may be wrong, it might've been eight thousand, yeah. I could be wrong. So that's why I have that one in too, is just, um, be as efficient as we can, as quick as we can and got it in and out of there, that just was impressive to me, how fast the guys did that. Uh, the two oh five again is update a motor grader. We can, we take that one out because they don't wanna have, have one on lease for me, or found me one to do, so, for this year, so. We probably go ahead and take that two oh five out. That's why I dropped that rental from seventy five down to fifty, is because I won't be able to do that.
He did what? He did seventy five, right? Oh, you dropped on Hershey?
Yeah, on that, that, the very top one, the rental, that's where I take out the money when we do the graders, so I, that's why I went ahead and have her drop back down to the fifty. It's because we're not gonna be able to, not because we don't have the budget, but they don't have the machine for us, so, so.
I took both those out.
So I, I think I'm seeing the answer down here under lease payment. So do we have all of our lease payments made then on those graders?
Yes.
I think so.
Yes, they're, they're paid off.
We don't have any payments left.
No, we were supposed to have one more, but at the end of the budget year last year, I went ahead and paid the other forty one thousand of it, so it's paid off, so that, that new grader and that excavator are paid off.
So that was our bond, that was our last bond.
Please.
Well, I call lease, I don't call.
Wasn't it a tax?
So.
It was, it was, it wasn't included on our bond schedule, it was considered.
Right.
Who were you paying John, uh, John Deere separately? Cause well, one was John Deere, one was CAT.
Yeah, that was through, uh, bank, NACO doing through the bank, what's the name, I can't think of the bank, it was through a bank in town.
So it really wasn't a bond?
No, it's really not a bond, it's just a.
A difference we've seen.
Now, Sugar Factory, you pay every year.
A different way to borrow money.
Yeah, a different way, different way for a county to borrow money. So, um, let's see, the other big ones, so armor coat I still on there at five hundred. That's the same, uh, we spent part of that already with our oil, so this is our armor coat, chip seal I call it. Kind of a, how do you wanna word that, works behind, so. Where we already did our June one, Highland and Stonegate earlier, that already come out of that. And then where we just did Liberty and Sugar Factory. So the oil, so the oil comes out of that, that's probably gonna be four hundred thousand, and then I buy the rock, the extra hundred, I buy the rock for the next year out of that, so it's already sitting there.
You guys have been really pleased with what's been going on there, right?
Yes.
How about you guys, have you guys seen what's going on?
I'm pleased with the product, but, um, the, how much we're getting done and, um, the cost of things compared to what we used to do.
Oh, this is a lot.
Is totally better, isn't it?
Well, the quality is better, Steve's really got that quality up, I mean, it's in a whole nother dog.
I hate to brag, but you probably have the best chip sealing crew in the state.
We do. We have, I'm not kidding, you guys need to go out and watch those guys, it is amazing.
Uh, the company that's out here, that Cabico comes and shoots the oil from, we get the oil, they do it here, Kansas, Colorado. And, uh, they say we are probably the best and fastest crew that they work with.
Really?
They could, these guys cover four hundred and fifteen feet a minute, which is just moving along covering that oil, it's everything that distributor can do to, to stay ahead of them.
They basically only schedule us two semi loads a day, because most of those companies, that must take them till five o'clock at night to get those unloaded. When I was up the other day, by nine o'clock, you had your first one off and you thought you'd be done with your second by eleven, eleven thirty.
Yeah, we do three tankers a day when we bring them out, so it's about eighteen thousand gallons that we shoot in half a day, six to noon usually we're done. So.
Good.
So, so, yeah, you can be proud of these guys, they're.
It's a really, really good.
They've really picked this chip sealing up and, uh, have, have ran with it, it's really been a good deal, so.
Did we buy that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? We bought two for it, brought it in from Florida.
And got it, yeah. I mean, it's not new, uh, any means, but it works great, it's, it's mechanical, it's not, doesn't have all the sensors and electronics on it, so maybe that helps.
Maybe she thinks after the villages, maybe we can go.
With our little mechanic guys, those guys go over that stuff, they haven't had a glitch.
Yeah, that's where the mechanics come in too, cause he pulls it in a few weeks before we're ready, goes through it, make sure nothing's, you know, so that's where, that's really been a great benefit there for as far as the mechanic in there, so.
It isn't a bad thought, but you could.
Or so.
To go and, go do, operate to like village and river or what.
Well, we could do that if you guys want us to do it, we could pick up some pretty good shit.
Would that be cutting in on the contractors again?
I don't know. Wouldn't they bring contractors in from South Dakota?
Used to, but some top coat closed up, that, they're the ones that used to do, I think City of Scotts was all the time, top coat, and so I don't know who's gonna do the city this year, I didn't talk to.
They just did.
Doug is the new, new guy there and.
They did moral this spring, and that, whatever they use for tar, you can go out there right now and you twist your foot, come, all the granules come right off, it's still nutsy, you go out on his stuff, and by five o'clock at night, you can't pry them out.
Really?
It's a whole good old story. These towns don't know what they're playing.
You know, it takes a good few days to get it, it to cure in with the oil, so we let it sit there before we broom it off, so next week we'll go around and broom them off.
That's the difference. Do you have anybody local that you're, that you, that you would be in competition?
Not at all.
No, you're bringing them from other states, that's different.
There's nobody local in the state.
Weed sprayers.
Simons could do it.
Simons probably could, I guess if they wanted to.
Yeah.
But we're still better than they are.
Make some money.
We're still better than Simons.
You guys gotta go out sometime and just watch, I mean, it, it's, them guys, they are, I mean, he's not, he's telling the truth, they are better than Simons. I, I've watched the state of Wyoming crews work, I've been all over them, and these guys are putting.
Yeah, that's the whole time thing, I guess, you know, because it takes a lot of people, we have, so we're not out grading when we do it for the week and stuff and. It's the whole, whole time thing, making time to go do all these other villages, cause they're gonna take longer, when you get in town with traffic, it gets to be a bigger headache with the traffic going than being out somewhere where you can just go, so, anyway. Bytuminus, this is the nine fifty, um, this is where we get into our projects since we're here. A couple of projects I have on the slate for next year, cause it is one in six times gonna be coming up here next month, and I'm working on that now. Uh, the two asphalt projects I have in there, County Road P in Minotary, it's by the feedlot there. A lot of complaints about that one, I think Mike did too, actually. Uh, that'll be reasphalated and concrete poured in that, in front of the entrance of the feedlot, so the trucks don't tear up, just push out the asphalt. And then I have Forty Second Street up there, our part of Forty Second Street to get milled and filled. So, and then the other part is, I have some patches out here on Oregon Trail, that something's going on out there with the subgrade, and they're sinking, if you drive it, it's like a roller coaster ride, once you come across the canal and by the Farm and Ranch. So Simon's is gonna go in here this fall when they get to Highway twenty six and go in and do a couple for us. So that's the asphalt repairs at this point.
Another question, how many miles of asphalt have we got accomplished since you started chip sealing? Twenty miles of asphalt.
Oh goodness, I'd have to go back and add them all up.
It's gonna be probably eighty, about eighty.
I think this year, we probably, we're probably at twenty miles just for chip sealing this year. We have, uh, Highland was seven miles, Stonegate's three miles down, so there's ten, Liberty's just under three, there's thirteen, and Sugar Factory was seventeen, we're right at twenty miles just this year. Last year was average sixteen to eighteen, so we're.
Then you had two miles on Stiegel well early this year.
That was new asphalt there, so that's, if you wanna talk about total asphalt, that's probably twenty two miles of asphalt this year.
It's pretty darn good.
Uh, the structure, pipes and culverts, a hundred and seventy five, recall the last two years, we've done pipes out of nineteen and G area the last two years. This year I have three areas to do these at, one is over here on County Road M, you gotta rot it out pipe there, uh, gotta go through the monument, and just so you get to County Road M, you gotta take a left before you get to Highway ninety two. We got a big forty eight inch tube there that is rotted out, so that needs to be replaced this year. Then I have another one out south of Gearing on County Road twenty two, it's a timber substructure, but a concrete channel deck, but it's timber, timber piling, they're all rotted off, so, I mean, we can get away with putting a tube in there too. And the other one is on County Road two, south of Jay over in Lyman. That's a three span timber bridge that is currently closed because it's gone, like a tornado went through there. That hopefully will be a pipe, that one may be a subject where people wanna go out there and look at it, this is, that is one of those roads that is two cars a day, so.
But it's still.
Yeah, they can go around and they take the ditch road up in and stuff, but, I mean, the, the guy that lives there, of course, would like something done, cause he lives there and travels down to his pasture, and there's a couple others there. So. Those are, those are fall under the tube one there, and that's a hundred and seventy five. If that County Road two one, we do get to do that, that hundred and seventy five probably isn't enough, so. I just really copy the number for next, for the next year, just to hoping, I guess. Bridges, I have eight twenty five, is that what you got?
Okay.
Uh, we got two bridges on Bridge Match, uh, one of these is that Cook Oil Bridge. It's ready to go out, uh, they approved the design on it and stuff, so it's ready to go out for bid, that'll become a concrete box.
But this is our portion of those.
Well, we have to pay it and then we get the two fifty back.
Don't you run that through the other fund?
Bridges, no.
Don't you run that through the Highway Bridge? Don't you run that through the highway bridge?
The buyback? Sometimes I can, yeah, but I don't have any money in there. I spent all that last year on River Bridge and the other bridges we did. And then the other one is the concrete slab one, we approved bids here a couple months ago for the, have the deck slabs made. It's out on County Road Thirty-five, northeast of Miniter, and that's the other one that I have in there. So those are those two bridges. And then the engineering fees, I have it a hundred and fifty. And that's adjusted to that big area, that's the big money one there, so. Engineering fees?
The engineering fees, that's not still part of.
No, that's for next year. No, that's not part of the, the River Bridge, that's done and paid. And that, this is for the bridges that we're doing, the pipes have to be engineered, cause they're all, they're, right now they're over twenty, all those bridges on, on the NBIS. So they all have to be engineered.
Okay, that's fine, I was just making sure that wasn't something.
Same with my County Road P and Forty Second Street, you know, they have to be engineered, so. That's where that comes in. Then, of course, the lease payment now is gone out of that part, so.
Since we've been sitting here.
Six hundred and sixteen?
Sixteen thousand, yeah.
So he's at eight point two something?
Yeah, eight million two sixty-seven.
You took the excavator out, correct?
Uh-huh.
And the, and the motor grader?
Yeah, and the motor grader.
And so, yeah, compared to last year's budget. Yeah, then he's only two hundred thousand of that. So that's. Three percent or so.
You can save that.
Then the tax asking part is more, because I'm not starting with as much money. Highway allocation dropped a hundred thousand.
We've increased this budget a million, three million dollars over the last three years, and we cannot sustain this. The eight million was like a one-time thing in my mind, we can't do it. Are you coming up with the money? What, what are we closing, home center, the detention, the sheriff's? Or the county attorney?
You know, um.
I know we'd like some of those gone, but they, not practical.
I was hearing you.
Well, I haven't even been so much thinking about the county attorney's office and public defender. And that part of the public safety things, but, um. You know, I've said before again that. One of our most, um, the things, the things that we, you know, have to do, in my opinion, and what government's about, is safety, people. And that, to me, first looks at. Those three that you just mentioned, sheriff's office, communications, detention. And then you could go further to the county attorney, public defender, roads as part of the.
Keep roads a little higher up the ladder, you fall through one of these bridges, you're definitely gonna need the rest.
So those are some of the highest on the priority list, it seems to me. Um, but, yeah, there's still some kind of a limit that we have to put on ourselves and, um.
We could do it all, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a bad thought, but.
So what is, what are, so if you go on down to your tax answer, what's the true tax answer? Cause part of that is match, isn't it?
He predicted six hundred and sixty-two thousand from County Bridge Match, right?
Yes.
And eight, three, this is, this is the number we, we have, highway, street allocation money, three point five million to support this budget. That is going to happen. And instead of, yeah, we've been getting some other taxes that go towards the budget. Go down to true tax ask, sitting at three million one oh seven, I have right now.
What was it last year?
Uh, well, I did one, one million nine seventy-five, we took five hundred thousand from capital improvements and a hundred and fifty thousand from Keno. Your tax ask last year was two point six, I mean, one point nine, but we took other sources that we don't necessarily have now.
Yeah, those are gone.
Nine, one nine seven five, we might be able to do something from, we gotta look at where our inheritance stands, but gotta see where everything. Inheritance typically goes to general to support the movement to fear. Moving of those. We moved one nine seven five last year, one, one point eight year before. Four, one million six five nine, that was twenty twenty-one.
Does any of that bridge match get to apply back after we pay and we get our money back? We'll have money coming back on Monday.
Yeah, yeah, after, after the project's done, we submit the paperwork and all that to NDOT, and then they give us our, our fifty-five percent. Two hundred and fifty thousand, they have it deposited, and we get the deal.
But you've got that figured in already, don't you?
Yeah, that's figured in, into the revenue part.
He's basically committed. There's some things you are absolutely committed to.
Yes, those are the contracts we signed back earlier in the year.
To get that bridge match. Projects he's been doing right now, committed to, we can't just cut because we're already in chip sealing. Could be something that doesn't meet, meet.
I mean, like the, the Cook Oil Bridge, we have till next year to complete it, but. Next year you gotta make sure you got it in there, cause it has to be done next, it'd have to be done next winter, it's the.
We lose it.
Or you, or we're gonna be. I don't know, never not, not got one done, let's see what they do, I guess. So, if you don't do it this year, for sure would have to be, be next year, next winter. You have to do it when the water's off, of course. So if that was a thought out of bridges, then you could probably take, you know, six hundred thousand out of there.
Out of the bridges, and then you take out the bridge match.
Leave that two twenty-five for the other bridge.
But is that where you take that revenue out with bridge?
I think you would, I would think you could still leave it in there. Even if it worked out, if you didn't have engineering, you'd still leave it in there.
That you're gonna get this money?
Yeah. You've had bridge match in there year after year. For, for revenue, you know, the bridge did you?
I just had it in my mind that you had to spend it to get it, so this was money you would get after we spent the money.
It is, but it's. You already entered the revenue. We still keep it in there, even though you may not do that.
If you're keeping the expense there.
You, I guess you put it in there, thinking you're gonna do the project for the year, like County Road Five, that was Bridge Match. It was in there for a few years, because they, you had it in there hoping to get it done that year, but you didn't, so you just carry it over the next year.
Okay, and the expense too?
Yeah. Yeah, the expense carries with it.
They wash, and if you don't do it, they.
Right.
Yeah.
So the tax asking here is. What were we down to, two point, or three point one or something, did you say?
Three million one, where I'm at.
Well, you've already given us several line items where you've taken monies out. Appreciate that, yours is one of the largest dollar volumes. And so obviously, when you start cutting, they're normally large amounts when you start cutting. When we come down to the. Part of push comes to shove here at the end, I don't know whether we can make it or not.
I don't know, that's what I was saying the other day. We, if this is a, friends have preserved the cash here, the fives go away, fives to me are the capital. Now, obviously, you're already spreading for some of these areas.
My point of view, though, if you take away the fives, then we're not getting anything done.
Well, we're not gonna do any capital projects, we can go, we can go.
To me, it's like taking, we're gonna take like ten steps backwards, because it's gonna be twice as hard to me to put that money back in next year. I mean, if you can't do it this year, what, what makes you think you can do it next year?
If we do away with the fires, we just will do away with some water to get, to cut some down, to pick up the fire. That's the only, that's the only thing that you've got that costs, the most money is the way.
He needs those to keep the roads maintained.
Well, if you don't have money to work with, you're not gonna do no capital projects, we don't need all this out, let me tell you, right? I would, if I was running my business, and I had thirteen guys working, and we can't do any work this year, I wanna recut that down.
So my question in, okay, do some commercial chip sealing for the small, like, small villages, you say you don't have enough time, we gotta maintain the road. And that's only a week or two in the year. So why would I cut out a whole year's worth of salaries for stuff that work that has to be done to maintain the roads, because I can't do a project?
That's what's gonna happen, if we start cutting these projects, we, we can't let the guys go sit yards.
They don't, they have roads to maintain all year long, I mean, what?
You got programmers, they're not maintaining those guys, they're, they're a whole different fleet of people. Greater operators. What he does, he pulls everybody together when he does it. He shuts down the graders, he shuts down the, everybody's in. I mean, those things he's doing, you know, he's pulling together, we couldn't do that on a daily basis, we couldn't go out and do projects.
Well, I think one of the things that we're looking at here is, last, you know, if we look at that bottom line inter-fund transfer from general fund. We were at one point four million, we were at one point eight million, we were one point nine million, and now we're at three point one. So.
Well, we put a million in for that bridge, that's what we're doing, we connect a million in.
Not in here, that's not in here.
That is not in here.
That was in Arpa stuff. So, yeah, that's not in here.
And you took some from capital improvements, and you can't, absolutely cannot have that money again. And Keno's basically the same way.
And these projects on these five projects, those are contractor type projects. They're not something that, we're not gonna go and do County Road B and Forty Second with our people, yeah, same with the box culvert. Now, the pipes, we'll probably do with our people, but. Those things are, you know, nine times out of ten are contractor type, type projects.
To me, in simple terms, it's gone from one point nine to three point one, or call it two million to three million, and, you know, that's a. That's a fifty percent increase of. That line, and. Well, I know we can't continue that level of. Increase.
But that increases because our budget is that much, it's because our revenue is down, we're not carrying over as much money. We getting a hundred thousand less from allocation. Those two in itself are probably like eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred from what?
Our highway allocation's a hundred thousand less than last year.
No, it's like ten thousand.
How much are less?
Twenty thousand less than last year. Five thirty-eight, three, three point five, three eight, three point five one nine, three point five four seven.
Probably check your twenty-four number, I thought it was like a hundred thousand dollars less. When we met the first time, cause you were kind of getting all of those less. At any rate.
What we budgeted, maybe? Yeah, you were, you budgeted three point six, and we got three point five one nine. Budgeted three point six, but we didn't get that money. Yeah, that's why we thought it dropped, and we didn't, when we met before, I don't think we had all the revenue numbers either.
So did we, where's this capital improvement fund, that's a, work to the general fund?
Capital improvement, where we have money set aside to do capital projects. Which is sitting at about a million dollars right now. You, you've tanked it to, you've tanked it, we had it up to two. Which, I mean, it doesn't, and you've done projects with it. That's what's going to pay for what's happening over at the courthouse?
Boiler.
Boiler, might go for a phone system, we talk about that, cause we've been, we have a twenty-year-old phone system. Other needs, help with generator, help with the HVAC.
Well, it's a new generator, we're not gonna eliminate it.
But, we, we get the generator we have, it was used for that.
Oh, yeah.
It was used to buy other radios that might need to, what do you call that sewage monster out at the detention center? I mean, you gotta have reserve money for things that you either budget or you don't, and. That two million dollar came from COVID funds, because we paid overtime to the comm center, detention center, and the sheriff. When we got.
And we had, what you're saying is, we had two million in there, and over the last two years, we've taken a million out.
Just for road projects. So I think you've gotten a good chunk of it. Spinning it down to nothing, cause it doesn't come, I mean, I don't think we're gonna have another COVID to get another couple billion bucks.
That line four two zero dash three zero cost reimbursement. Tell me, was that the bridge thing that you were talking about? That's not on that line item.
Did you, did you build for some, okay, you build, building maybe for some. Else you get money in there.
Yeah, plus like transit and, uh, we build transit and building and zoning for part of their electric bill and that sort of thing, that's what that is.
Yeah, but that's, last year was four hundred and ninety-four thousand.
I'd have to go look at my revenue.
Something don't look.
What's this motor vehicle fee, Steve, what is that?
That's when you license your vehicle.
You spend that much for licensing out of the county?
No, no, that's revenue, isn't it?
Revenue.
Okay, it's fees, yeah, I was gonna say, that's revenue, yeah.
Money coming in.
But I thought, hell no.
All those are revenues.
So that's a portion of what they pay for.
Our portion, yeah.
New cars.
That we get back.
What's cost reimbursement, is that, that is your?
We were just saying, that's he gets money back.
Yeah, that's what we charge, like transit, building and zoning, and we, the road department. It comes to the road department.
Oh, oh, oh.
But there was something.
That amount, four ninety-four, that seems to be.
There was something big, we'd have to pull the detail, and have to get that from the treasurer's office.
Yeah.
I'm curious.
Is that historically is not?
Not usually.
That'd be great.
Unless he did go some chip, do some chip sealing.
No, no.
One year, we had another chunk in there.
Yeah, there is one nine, one ninety-three ones.
We'll see. Yeah, that's right.
I'm gonna designate you to take any times down if somebody leaves or anything like that. I'm gonna go get my computer so I can do the kind of stuff with you. I mean, you guys love, I could be giving to help you.
Okay.
Well, uh, you know, I don't know. We're, we're down to the bottom of this, uh, for the roads department, and, um. Yeah, the big question is, is that. revenue side of things and, um, can we board the three point one in taxes? I don't even think that we can do in the overall scheme of things, this is probably, well, I haven't seen the sheriff's corrections by suspicion as a dollar amount, that this is probably going to be one of the bigger ones with that big of an increase of a million dollars than beyond last year. And, um, we'll have to see where we're going to come out, but, you know, we're, we're earlier this evening, we said the the most we could possibly.
Actually, and I'm pulling the wrong number into my spreadsheet, I'm pulling the last year, six point nine seven five. And if you want this one, I'm going to say we need to carve five million because I have a mistake.
We're going to, this minute, we want to see what this number is going to do, it's looking strange here. I think that should be closer to two million instead of instead of three point one.
Yep, we can go look at that too.
Huh?
We can go look at that too and make sure my number is right.
Well, when you get through the deal, we'll read it. Steve, on your actual expenditures, go ahead. As your, uh, seven, seven, six, five, did that include that bridge on, uh, South Broadway in that? On the seven, on the total revenue, uh, actual expenditures for twenty-four, twenty-five, bottom line. Where did you show where you spent the money for that?
The River Bridge? The River Bridge did not come out of this.
So it wasn't in this, it didn't come, nothing moved in this?
For the River Bridge, nothing came out of the road fund, whatever I paid my part, we didn't have enough for the yard, but I took out of buyback.
Well, none of that shows, so none of that.
None of that shows in here for the River Bridge, there's nothing in this as far as.
Because I know she says you didn't put any money in, but really, some money had to come out of that.
For the River Bridge, it didn't, not on this one.
Okay.
The River Bridge coming out of the buyback fund, which.
In Arpa.
In Arpa.
That's two places.
Arpa ran a little short and I had to pay, I paid all the engineering out of my buyback and remaining hundred thousand.
Earlier last year, you did the east bridge and some of that had to come out of this.
That's still come out of the buyback.
It all come out of the buyback on that, remember?
This one here was pretty much counting. Because that was an eight hundred thousand dollar bridge, eight hundred and seventy-one, so that's why that number's there. So, yeah, so.
So some things changing, Lisa, or not?
Oh, yeah. That's why I got to make sure everything else is going to be pulling from the right columns and stuff. And this tells me I should have their software next year. Three one. I guess not, I've got to see what has happened, don't look so bad about the same, we still have one.
So what's your number?
Well, he's still asking for a million more than last year. And he's going to take, what is that number, I think it's three million five eight seven? Because he took five hundred thousand off, where we started.
Anyways, Mark, my taxes, we should be able to get that up.
So again, as we said, the tax asking is approximately two million last year and three million this year. Those are round numbers. Okay, well, um, to me, I would just say that again, when we come down to the final numbers and final things that are going to be figured out and if Lisa's told us the maximum we can levy is somewhere in fifteen point six and we've already, we still have eighteen something or seventeen or eighteen something.
Eighteen million two two two.
So we've got to cut about three million dollars somewhere. And so, um, I suspect as normally happens, those, the biggest big funds end up, you know, with a fairly big chunk of whatever we have to cut. And you've already helped this and I appreciate that, generally, the sheriff comes in and he helps us by quite a bit. But I'm concerned that even with those cuts, um, we're not going to make fifteen six. Without calling it. I mean, we have to make that, but I'm just saying that I'm, I don't think that that's going to come easy without possibly, I mean, I can see some cross-the-board cuts or some things like that coming. So, because somehow we got to get there. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's not even, and I don't even want to be there, but, um, we got to get there to even meet the state's requirements.
Lisa, yes, when you were on the, never mind, I'm sorry, I think I can break everything.
Well, that may be as far as we can get tonight on this one. Used to have one more to go. Have anything else we need to talk about here that can help?
Did you find it a million?
Nope. I thought it was going to go backwards, but it didn't.
No, I didn't.
Anyone know?
Okay.
Want to do buyback now? That's pretty.
Yeah.
So buyback is the federal highway money that NDOT receives from federal highway and then they distribute it to the counties. This March, not this March, March twenty twenty-six, we'll get a hundred and ninety-five thousand and some change for highway part, and then in the bridge part, we'll receive a hundred and eighty, a little less than a hundred and eighty-one thousand. We get those every March and the amount changes from year to year, so, um, this is not anything the county puts into, this is strictly that, the bridge has to be spent on bridge and I have to fill out a certification every year that that money went to every year out of this fund and turn it into Jody Gibson so they know where that money is being spent. So, the highway part you can spend on, uh, either either, so. This fund is pretty well depleted, it was, we're up over a million in it here, I believe, a year ago. Uh, we're down to, you know, like five hundred thousand dollars in that now after paying for the River Bridge. About River Bridge repair, the engineering, the extra hundred thousand for the deal. I took some, had some highway work done out of this too, so this one here, I guess I was thinking I'd like to do like Lisa's thought, let it sit and build unless I have an emergency to take something out of it, to get it built back up there. So, because it's getting depleted, usually we try to keep a million bucks in there.
I see that.
So.
You pay the highway bond.
Yes, the highway bond comes out of that every year of a hundred and twenty-two, I believe it is, thousand?
A hundred and twenty this year.
Hundred and twenty, yeah, that comes out every year out of this, so. I mean, if push comes to shove, I could probably take something out of this if it's a smaller type thing, but like I said, I'd like just the they sit dormant, because there's always an emergency thing to pop up and maybe this would help to do that if it's not too expensive.
You, you've gained on a lot of bridges over the last year or four years.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have any major bridges out after?
Not major ones, just the one that's a two-car, two-four-wheeler at a bridge, maybe over there at Lyman. That's the only, that's the only one that's closed.
That's only a two, we're only going to fifty grand.
We, we are, uh, I don't know, we really went to town on repairing and replacing the littler bridges, the timber bridges, putting concrete decks on them or putting pipes in them. That's the increase in the budget the last three years, you know, there's been a lot of work going on.
There has, we've got.
Not just the bridges, but look at the asphalt.
Yeah, and, and I want to say in this, you're all, you're, the areas that you take care of, I think we're just pleased as we can be.
You've done a great job.
As to what's been getting accomplished, um, just concerned about can we pay for and can we keep going at the pace we've been going and.
Right, that's the bad thing, it takes a long.
It does, yeah, yeah. Can you fix one for a while, maintain and do it basic to rebuild and look at next year? Maybe other opportunities will open up.
But I mean, almost every bridge we have now is passable.
Oh, yeah.
What I got here, we had like five bridges that were shut down.
Yeah, we had at least three or four, those are all open, yeah, those are all fixed and those are expensive bridges, you know, M was eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, I believe. You know, count out five, so.
You're going to try and let this money sit in this fund?
Yes.
But you have the ability to spend some money based upon
Yep.
how you structure this.
Yes.
So what would happen, Steve, if we would hold up on the Cook Oil Bridge and you had to spend a little less, can we, do we stay kind of, if we back that one out for one year for Cook Oil?
We could very well back that out for one year.
I mean, it's still passable, we're still.
You just have to make sure that next year it's going to have to be.
It's got to be done.
Because it has to be done. So, yeah, we very, we very well could pull that one out.
I'm just thinking if we could hold that down a little bit, level out some of these expenses somewhat, but not make it go away, but just hold it back.
It's an option that come Wednesday, D-Day or whatever, when you guys are done, it's an option that we could take it out of there. And I'm guessing that, I'm, I'm guessing that that amount could be, oh, we could probably take five fifty to maybe six hundred out of there, maybe leave enough in there for that other deck one that we're doing, that the slabs are being made for in there.
I think we want to leave that as a call.
So.
Put that one back.
So.
Roaden Bridge, whatever you're talking. Is it in the Roaden Bridge?
Yes, it's in the Roaden Bridge in the bridges, in, uh, right there, three forty-seven, oh, no, you're in the red.
I'm in the red.
Right in up there, uh, oop, passed it, it's very bottom row. I think I got eight and a quarter in there, eight fifty?
You got some engineering in that, I bet, don't you?
The engineering is, is engineering.
Is it separate?
Yep, it's separate.
Are you going to spend that engineering this year as well?
Well, I usually try to engineer for the year ahead for the next year.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, and then when you get to that building year, you're not waiting six months for engineers to do all their studies and all that stuff, it's done, you can just bid it.
What would happen if we pulled out four hundred, let's say we pulled out five hundred thousand, left three twenty-five in that so we didn't have to take the whole bite and extra because we're going to, we're going to be back in the same boat. We took out part of that, we got, yeah, we took out five hundred thousand. Now we're five hundred thousand away from home, aren't we? One year down the road.
No, because you've elevated the last two years so much.
You were, you were a million away, right?
We're three million away from overall. We were just comparing your ass from one year to the next. Just because you got it all last year, do you have to have it all this year?
What do we, what do we, where, where do we need to be this year, what's your number you're kind of good at here?
I, I need to take off another three million dollars.
Three million?
For that five hundred thousand you just gave back or gave me. And, and don't ever say if you turn back in your budget, I gave money.
We were only talking, I didn't give her anything.
Was that?
We were only talking.
No, I mean, just have to be aware of that, then it has to be done next year, it has to be in there, so.
You save money in there.
For that one bridge.
For the Cook Oil one, yeah.
You pull five hundred thousand on that Cook Oil Bridge and try to, I thought you said there was a million dollar.
You, you were talking tax ask.
Right.
Tax ask went down to two point six now, where last year we asked for it to be.
It's one point nine.
One point nine is what was given, now we're, you're saying two point six. One nine, one nine five, one seven five was stretch, I mean, we were begging for money in January through in March. Because we have million dollar bond payments and stuff, so. Any project you could do in the spring is much appreciated too, Steve, you know that, you've been.
You paid off the, the other deal, so that was like, was that a hundred or something?
The, uh, greater lease thing?
The greater.
No, that was like eighty-two thousand a year, forty-one thousand dollars.
So that's not back on.
So that's, no, that's not killing us, that's paid off anyway.
Didn't enough to.
It helped, but it's not that much.
No, so.
Now, which one is it stuff you have to contract in?
So like the Bytuminus, the nine fifty?
Can that go for a year?
That's contractor.
You don't want to, but, I mean, you've got to save money somewhere.
I know, there's only so much patching and put on forty seconds.
We've got to keep some projects in order to keep these guys rolling.
And Bytuminus surfacing is contract labor?
Yes.
So how are you, how does that affect your guys?
What do you mean?
Well, he's saying we got to keep these guys busy, like.
Well, for, for like this one here, we haul them, we keep the millings, so we haul the millings when they mill it.
That's what the road.
That's what we, yeah. But then the truck drivers are still spreading gravel or.
They have a lot of value.
Contractors?
No, ourselves.
And so I'm, exactly, you're saying you have no, you have all these projects to keep them, keep them busy, but yet nine hundred fifty thousand dollar project does not require one of our people.
Yes, it does, that's what he was telling you, it does.
Well, then I ask and you say no.
It's just for, yeah, our only part that we do in that is because we like to have the millings, so I request them these, just like we have Highland and Stiegel, we haul the millings and we keep them. That's our part of that project. And some of them, in the past, we've even helped flag, I guess. Highland, I believe, we helped flag to get that cost down because it was pretty hot. Stiegel, we didn't because it was, that aren't what we needed. But even if our guys aren't out there, we're still hauling gravel, hauling clay graders or digging, cleaning ditches out or whatever, so there's still stuff to do. Just because it's contractors doing it.
A lot of moving parts.
Doesn't mean.
For that three, four weeks that you don't have projects.
Doesn't mean it's.
Lay in lock for four weeks, I mean, it's, so you're arguing, we don't have projects for our guys, it's like, this is it the whole year.
The chip seals were, were, they're busy.
I gave you an answer there. Do more. Do more for other people.
Be nice if we had some revenue, but I don't think it's, I don't know.
Probably not that much. Not that much.
The labor, your, your oil and your, your rock, you're going to be a biggest proponent in the world.
Oil is your big one, is your big expense, so.
Well, yeah, but if you're doing it for someone else, they're paying for the oil.
So you're really just making money off your, off your labor. Because if you did it for a city, I'm sure they would get their own rock, pay for their own rock and light up the oil, they're just, you're just making labor money.
But you're keeping your people.
You're busy. They don't need more to do.
You guys. Got to have projects and you've got more projects, but not that project. Only one where the county has suspended another million bucks.
Those are contractor projects.
So, you know, when I, when this is all said and done, if, again, if we come to the end and say, well, we got to trim two point eight million dollars, then, um, we're going to have to decide where those priorities are and I, to me, what I say for all departments as far as that goes is for us to say, we're going to be familiar with your budgets somewhat, but I would just say, okay, roads, we're going to need you to cut half million dollars and then you're going to have to go in and figure out where that comes from. You can do that better than we can. You know, that, especially if we start to do across-the-board cuts and if that's your percentage, then, then you'll have to take a look.
Do you have another truck in there right now too?
Yes, I have a new dump truck in there, yeah.
Sure chance we can pick up another, use the license, we could have bought a couple decent trucks.
Yeah, I mean, there's always that possibility if we can, if we can find one, yeah. I mean, it's a possibility, so.
I think what I've been watching, Trump's been eliminating all this emission stuff.
That's what I heard, EPA supposed to be getting rid of all the emission stuff, I guess, coming out here. EPA was going to get rid of all the emission stuff here coming like in the next six months or something, get rid of all that.
If they do, truck prices should drop some and we should be getting a lot better vehicles. If they do, truck prices should drop some, and we should be getting a lot better vehicles. But I'm just saying, if, if we had to, that would be something we could, if we get to where we get in the crunch.
Well, can we make any more progress on Steve's stuff, or are we pretty much where we're gonna be for now? So I think we went over year three that we had to look at.
Yep.
We have blood stuff, but I didn't figure that.
What's that?
We have, he has blood control.
Yeah, we have the, and the Scottsburg sinking fund, the sinking fund's nothing different.
They're not that big, except I didn't put money into drain, but.
Those don't amount to a lot, I mean, those are good.
No, those are small.
They probably don't change a lot of them year to year.
The sinking fund is just if there's a repair on the, needed on the drain, you know, it's there to do it or purchase another house, if it sits on the drain, they gotta purchase some type of thing.
These people up here, I've heard lots of good comments about you and what's going on out there, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. So, you got a good bunch of guys out there and.
You go to hell with them.
In November, we got two hundred thousand, in January, I mean, but it says N D A T.
Oh, that's what, that's the bridge match money. Cost reimbursement, it's the bridge match money.
So it should be somewhere else.
You did it wrong, please.
Um, and our remittances that are part of packets?
That's what they put it under.
I was just looking for big dollars to find that for you.
And it's been under bridge match?
Yeah, so when you budget it, it shouldn't, you put it under the bridge match, but when you get the checks, it goes under the cost reimbursements, how they put it in there.
That's why that big amount was in there.
Yeah, that's what that's, that makes sense.
From you guys, don't you, or no? I don't know for sure what happened.
I don't think so, because I just submit all the paperwork, engineered bills, submit it to them, and they
But it, it still was in the revenue side, so it's not gonna change the bottom line, but it straightens out what, what we were wondering about.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you, I found it from Heather's reports that are part of packets. Yeah, I'm understanding, I understand what you're saying, how much was it, four hundred fifty total? Between, yeah, one in November and one in January. One was two hundred thousand and one was two hundred and fifty.
So that's what that is, that's why it's.
Yeah, that's why that number was so.
As soon as I hear it, we know, new one.
Is that gonna help us any?
No.
No, that's just, that's just the revenue.
And she definitely changed what it was. Gonna clarify.
Yeah, just where it's supposed to.
I wish, I'm sorry, Russ.
Well, I was just, man, I was just waiting for them. Little bit more help here.
All right, well, we appreciate your help and.
Yeah, thanks for your time on a Friday.
Yeah, Friday night. So, um, Ms. Lisa, the, we talked about maybe doing the commissioners.
Did you see anything that needed to be adjusted?
You know, you gave us those sheets, I think, yesterday, didn't you?
I think, I think so.
But I'm not finding them in my stuff here.
Aren't you? Ow. Well, I can make copies.
Oh, well.
Mine is, I don't have it either, I thought you gave it to us.
I got it right here.
You got, oh, you know what? It was Monday.
Oh, Monday.
It was gonna be packed up Monday.
So if you can copy Russ's or Heather's or whatever.
You got it, or else?
I got mine, so.
Let's see.
I got mine.
You got yours, so I just.
I don't. Charlie, do you have the one for the county commissioners' budget?
Yep.
I just need one at this point.
I don't know.
This visitors' fund, that's basically income, there's not a lot of outgoing, is there?
Well, and Charlie, you mentioned tourism yesterday, and I didn't know if you were serious about that.
That's why I threw it out there.
Yeah, I thought we should, you know, we're, we're supposed to set the budget for them, and there's,
Right.
you know, with the allocation of people. This much to sports tourism, this much to leisure tourism, I think is something that we should have some say on. You know, the last large grant cycle, seven percent of the money. Seventy percent of the grants submitted for sports tourism, a million dollars. Being requested from the sports entities in town.
Well, I, I think there's no doubt we need to look at it. Um, I guess the only thing is, Lisa, you printed the sheets off for tourism stuff, but we didn't invite Brenda.
Uh-uh.
And so that'd be the only other issue, is we probably need to invite her when we get ready to talk to the chief. Well, let's look at the county board one at least and see if we can.
Think he?
Yeah.
Changed a lot in the last few years.
Yeah, I would suspect this one will be a lot different.
Sorry, Lisa, I don't, I don't have that.
Well, lucky for you. Me? What? What?
Would you hand me mine out there?
Well, I, oh, I thought you, okay, here's.
You borrowed it.
That's why I just gave it away to Charlie.
No, it's still in there.
No, I took it out and already handed it.
There you go.
Because I was.
You need this one?
I would be fuddled with paper.
Here, you need this one?
Yeah.
Here.
You want another one?
Yeah, I still need.
I thought I was just.
I think we could trip the travel. Because.
Yeah, I haven't even looked at it, but.
Yeah, I just looked at the traveling pages.
Yeah, we, we have.
Request is three thousand. The actual spent last year is about fourteen hundred.
You said NACO pays for a lot of your travel, Charlie?
That's under NACO though, isn't it?
Not even ours, where it's not even in.
How many times do you go? Yeah, that's what I'm kinda thinking. Charlie brought up looking at public defenders travel. I think we look at everybody, because when you go, send everybody to Lincoln and McCartney.
Lisa, I guess.
Maybe they need to be doing more Zoom meetings or going less.
You know, we'd probably, if we're gonna cut anything, we should be cutting travel. I know we're gonna get, there's not as much to cut out of travel. Projects needs to be a priority. Conventions and education.
Well.
We can play catch-up when it comes to education, we can't really play catch-up when it comes to maintenance.
I get, and I'll just tell you where I'm at, as I'm, I'm just glance at this, but our bottom line budget number is less than two percent increase, and that's where we wanted people to be, two percent. And that's where we're at.
So we're done?
We're done.
In my opinion, it, it's a good example for everybody. Two percent increase.
Ours could be, ours could still be cuts more.
Well, the one thing good about ours is that our wages don't go up, and so that part stays good, but the insurance does, but.
But, 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 yeah, but there isn't hardly anybody in insurance.
It doesn't matter, it's how we budget for it.
Right. You remember, they, they charge for all of us.
You explained to me that again, because it just didn't stay. Now we, I, we budgeted something, we never get to use.
Let me.
Okay, you explain to me why we budget things we don't use.
Use it, that's the reason, you could use it.
But until we do.
But, but what if you suddenly quit tomorrow, and we put somebody else in here?
So much for me telling it.
Just a second, just a second, let me just ask another question with that question. So, we haven't used it, so where does that money go then? We haven't used it now for two or three years.
That's not the part I can answer, that's a Lisa question. Let me tell you why it's a good idea the way she's doing it. Because Daphne doesn't take insurance in my office. Just like she was saying, if you were to leave tomorrow and we had a new commissioner sitting in your chair and they took it, we didn't budget for it.
Don't think it don't cross my mind.
No, but, but, all of us. We, it, it's good for department heads to have it budgeted.
Great, I'm glad we have a budget, okay. Now, the next question is, where does it go? Been budgeted, not using, now where's the money go?
Insurance pot, because I asked her that question the other day.
An insurance pot?
Well, our pool, our money.
You remember, I'm gonna circle back to the fact that the very first day, we talked about the funds and the balance in every fund. We're not talking about every fund today, we're only talking about the ones that have, that property taxes affect the balance. There, we have a pot that's called self-insurance fund, self-insured fund, the twelve fifty-seven fund. Money moves from the general fund to here at a thousand dollars a month per FTE or insurance eligible employee. We put it in a reserve fund called self-insured fund, and that's where we pay insurance premiums for those people who do take our coverage. That's also where we, for self-insured, we pay out health claims after our
We just.
third-party administrator will go through and say, okay, after we turn in, we had a CAT scan, three thousand dollars, we reduce it down to twelve hundred. Either that might hit the person's deductible, may have to pay it, or it's the county burden, and we pay it from that.
But you're building a reserve.
We're building a reserve.
There's just one reserve out, none of them, we got so many reserves.
Well, but in health insurance, we certainly have to have a pool of money.
Well, yeah.
What is self-insure money?
Where is that, where's that self-assurance, because we can use that money, you know, if that thing.
You can use it, but it's taken as low as it's been since I've been here right now.
It's low, or is it?
It's very low. Five hundred thousand is how we finish off the year.
Wow.
It's really low. It's, we've had two very bad years, which is why we're looking at different options. Because we've had some very, you know, people. And we, we bear the burden of the first eighty thousand dollars. So, there goes our chunk of money in a fast way.
Are we quitting?
So, yeah, my question is, uh, can we quit?
Yes.
Really? No, 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 no.
Oh.
This is quick, but I'm gonna call sheriff for detention Monday, does that work for y'all, or what do you wanna do?
Well, I think we need to get one of those big ones.
Is that enough notice for him? Does he know?
We're gonna tell, I sent some to Troy, because Troy, interestingly enough, is not busy Tuesday, because he is working on a deal where we will be doing, probably be providing coverage for the city of Minoterra, which they'll be paying us, because they cannot hire police officers.
Oh, really?
He'll, he'll be a revenue producer.
Right.
So, anyway.
So, next week, we're Monday at four?
Monday at four.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, I did Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday's the courts.
But Tuesday, we might be late, because I'm in training till four.
Right, but just a few minutes.
Just two minutes.
Right, well, like I said, this will still be set up for training the next morning.
Wednesday, whatever else.
To be seen, but these are your big budgets, and hopefully you can mull it over for three, four days and finalize some stuff by the phase of the process.
What? Eighteen? What about it? Oh, by the meeting?
By the meeting, maybe we will be, you guys can just.
You guys won't, you won't have values for number yet.
I don't care, we, we still need to trim two, three million bucks.
Oh, yeah.
That's just our, and with them, we might have some gravy to work with, you know, but we've still got some big cuts that need to happen.
And don't forget, we're already having an extra meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Right, Tuesday.
Oh, so we do have that one.
Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
And then I need to research what, when to do that.
Twenty-sixth is the following week.
Oh, man.
Yeah. We have to have a couple of meetings in September.
I might be at State Fair.
Okay. We just gotta be sure we have enough, the right amount of people, but the twenty-sixth is the one that we agreed to the other night at the meeting.
For me. Yeah, but Lisa's gonna use it all up too. I thought we were gonna have a five-minute meeting, and she's gonna use it on.
All right.
If we can finish.
Is that, that's not a regular meeting.
What do you need from us, anything?
Need to say if we're adjourned or not?
Meeting's adjourned. I have. Yeah.
Thank you.
Six twenty-five. Exactly. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
I will shoot out an email, well, it's online, and then Kelly will say, you need to leave.
When you go, what, like, need to travel?